Welcome, Council and Administration, and Channel 32 here. I will call the meeting to order, and I will also... Our Father in Hell, in humility we bow before thee on this beautiful day. We're thankful to live in this community. What a great community that we have benefited from, as our forebears have established here, have built here, and have built a wonderful community. We're grateful for those who have built Cardston. Father, we're mindful of the importance and significance of our stewardship as elected officials. We pray for thy Spirit, thy Spirit of discernment, as we discuss and debate and vote on issues of significance to the community and to those who reside here. May we ever have the well-being of the entire community in our hearts and in our minds. Again, we thank thee for all that we have been given here in this community, and we say this in the name of thy blood, son Jesus Christ. We've got one item that's going to be deleted. Linda Burwell was scheduled to come at 5:15. They are possibly rescheduling to a later time, and so she's chosen not to come. So just delete the delegation, schedule it for 5:15.
Would we still be able to discuss the issue at this point?
The specifics of the issue would be moot, but let's do this, if you would mind, Counselor. In the interest of time, and I don't want to put things off to the next council just to do that, but maybe if there's a lighter agenda, maybe we find a night when there's a little bit of a lighter agenda, and we can revisit the policy. Counselor Cronin has some thoughts on that. Maybe we'll honor just a very short discussion on that, because you've got some timely comments. Then we will go down to 7A1, where we would have a decision. That then becomes moot, and so that one is removed or withdrawn. We have two items also under 7. C is the piece of the correspondence here from the Town of McGrath, and D is the recycling trailer fire. Does that take care of everything that we need to adjust? So the Chair will honor the motion to adopt the agenda with those changes. Counselor Smith, so moves. Any discussion on that motion? I will call the question all in favor. The agenda is adopted with those changes. The Chair will honor a motion for adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 28, 2013. Counselor Court, so moves. Any thoughts, discussions, changes about that motion for adoption of the minutes? I will call that question all in favor. Minutes are adopted. The Chair will honor a motion for adoption of the minutes of the public hearing, that extensive detailed piece of minutes from May 28, 2013, moved by Counselor Dow. Any discussion on that one? I will call the question all in favor. The minutes of the public hearing from May 28 are approved by motion of council. Thank you very much, Council. Waiting matters, for sure, but we come through in a pinch, don't we? Number six, Jeff will speak to the issue of the lot prices, subsequent to the offer that we accepted to purchase a lot in Two A West Cul-de-sac. My wife cringes when I call it this, Counselor. Anyway, I call it the Two A West Cul-de-sac. We have had some discussion around, based on the offer that we accepted for Mr. Bishop, roughly an eight percent reduction in the listing price. So Jeff, would you speak to that for us, please?
Yes. The schedule in front of you would show the original lot price, then the discount, which would make the new total. I wanted to point out one thing that may have caused a touch of confusion in the background where it said there was an eight percent reduction. Anyone that was, had time and a calculator would have found that, excuse me, the new discount is about 9.2 percent. And the reason is, the offer we got two weeks ago, if we took everything after GST and the offer and everything after GST, it was about 8.3 percent. We took the intended discount and applied it only to the lot price, not to the connection fees or to the GST. So after it was all refigured, it's a little different than the eight percent that I told Marion to put in the background. So that's my responsibility there. We just figured it, excuse me, sorry, only on the land and not on the connection fees. Let me redo this. So this is as per council's request. I spoke with Morgan Straddy about it. He was comfortable that, given that things haven't moved for a while, his assessment would match exactly what the former price was, simply because that's what we sold them for. But he felt that council was reasonable to look at a discount anywhere at this range, and that probably reflected the slower sales and the developments.
This is, thank you, Jeff. This is a matter that council has discussed on one or two prior occasions, and so I'll allow time for just two quick comments. Counselor Cronin?
Well, I don't really think that it's a comment more than to put a motion forward to accept a schedule as presented. I really feel that the real estate market is not on the upside, and especially not in our town. And I think if we want things to start moving a little bit, maybe that is a wise move. So I would put the motion forward.
Is there, refresh my memory, is there a motion needed on this? Did we, okay, Counselor Cronin, so moves. With the clarification that the eight percent does not have anything to do with the connections. The connection fees are the connection fees. The eight percent is just on the lot itself. Any discussion on that motion?
It's 9.3 percent is the discount between the lot price and the discounted price.
Yeah. What are you going to do, the real estate to put down 10?
Ignoring GST, because GST is a different kettle of fish.
Okay, so any further comments on the motion? I will call the question all in favor. And basically, what that motion is, is regarding the figures that are here in front of us.
Yes, that's the things of the schedule.
The Schedule 6A. That's what we're working on, okay? All right. So that motion carries. Emergency dispatch centralization report is item number 6B. Since council last discussed this, and of course I attended the Mayors and Reeds, we've got quite a number of pieces of paper with information regarding this issue. There is a meeting on the 26th of June in Lethbridge. They want to keep that meeting to a manageable number. They specified, this being Alberta Health, they specified that this meeting regarding the proposed, well, I guess it's not a proposed move, it's a dict, dictum from the Alberta Health Services, that they are taking over ambulance dispatch throughout the province, dispatch locations being Calgary and Edmonton. They're only wanting two people from each municipality. And so Marion's done a lot of work on this, and so Marion will go. And so now we're trying to determine whether, if we have Danny Melvin go as our fire chief, whether or not he's our second person. Once we find that out, and we don't have lots of time to find that out, but they know how many people we're sending, two and maybe three, then at that point in time, we might, if Danny does not occupy one of those two slots they've got for us, then we might take another member of council. So we would...
Maybe you and I, one of us, to go.
So, now you're over...
Yeah, the fire.
We're both...
You're both on the fire. So we'll take care of that, once we have clarification on whether or not Danny takes up one of our slots or not. Now, let me just make a couple of comments from the Mayors and Reeds meeting. I can promise you this, and the majority of the presentation time was taken up by Mayor Dodick, but actually mostly by Tom Wickersham on Lethbridge Council. I believe they had a third counselor there. They didn't really introduce her. I guess they expected everybody knew who she was, but I'm guessing she was a member of Lethbridge City Council. They're not very impressed at all with this move by Alberta Health Services. Two MLAs for Lethbridge were there, and I think they know where the city stands. Greg Widdick was there, Bridget Pastor was there, and they didn't have a lot to say, because basically, in a sense, I guess they've got their marching orders from their superiors. Lethbridge has an integrated emergency dispatch service that they offer. They integrate police and fire and ambulance. They have the most up-to-date technology, they have the most up-to-date computer technology, allowing them to have a very efficiently and effectively well-run 911 center, and then the dispatch. And so they're really not impressed or pleased. There was not one person around the Mayors and Reeds table, yeah, probably a couple of dozen there, not one of them was, spoke out in favor of the Alberta Health Service controlling, because what it does is, it just, it pulls away the ambulance piece from the fire and the police. And to me, that just does not make any sense. It doesn't make any sense at all. So I'm sure there will be a lot of interest, and well-attended meeting on the 26th of June in Lethbridge. Lethbridge is proposing, as an alternate, they're proposing, I'll just wait a second here, Counselor, they're proposing five dispatch centers over the province. Those five, and I missed one of them, Calgary, Edmonton, Lethbridge, Grand Prairie. Now, I don't think it was Red Deer, because Red Deer's right in between Calgary and Edmonton.
Port Macquarie?
Well, Grand Prairie is up in the north, so Red Deer...
One's on one side of the province, one's on the other.
I'm almost wondering if it wouldn't be Medicine Hat, because Medicine Hat's kind of out in nowhere. But I don't remember the fifth one. But Lethbridge does have the highest level of technology for dispatch services. There is the option, there is the option for a municipal opt-out. They have the legal right that they can opt-out. So I don't think there's much else that I need to say, because much of what's been discussed is in this piece of paper, well, several pieces of paper, that come from Leslie Callister. So Counselor Dow, you got a question?
I think Calgary's too far away to handle timely service.
And then McFerrin, what was?
Well, I mean, let's face it, the whole picture of 9/11 calls and dispatching those emergency responders are all virtual, in essence. They're all on computers, and there's GPS and all that fun stuff. But in all honesty, in simple terms, it defies logic to me, computer technology aside, how in the world the left hand and the right hand are going to avoid doing this? I just, I just don't see it. And Lethbridge, I think, has made a good case for that. This is supposed to be implemented December 1st, and there's a lot of people that make no bones about the fact that lives will be lost, because the left hand and the right hand, in spite of all good intentions, likely will not know what each other's doing.
If one life is lost because of the reorganization, that's a crime.
Well, exactly. I mean, there's been no end of problems when the province took back the ambulance. It's been kind of a gong show in many areas. And now, they're going, they're taking it one step further. They want to, they will control ambulance dispatch. The only thing that makes any sense to me is some level of centralization, and for us, I think Lethbridge is perfect. And it still makes sense to me that police and fire and ambulance be dispatched from the same center, because the left hand and the right hand are clearly going to be just like this, because it's under, it's on one tabletop, so to speak.
It's a cost-reduction program.
Mayor Scott, can I ask you, do you have the agenda for the 26th of June?
I don't think it's been put out yet. I don't have it.
Okay, all right. So, it's fine, thanks. So we have to wait and see.
Counselor Court?
Also, in this same discussion paper, they talked a little bit about medical co-response. I just thought I would mention that, because we had Greg Ernitz make a presentation at our EMS meeting this last week, or whatever, we just had it, anyway, on using the fire people as first responders in case of a medical emergency, if they can't get an ambulance there right away. And I won't go into detail, but some of the comments in the discussion paper were quite accurate, was reflected some of our feelings that we don't want them, just now that they've taken over the ambulance service, to start downloading it back onto the municipalities through the fire departments again. You know, they're, ever since, as you commented, ever since AHS has taken over the ambulance service, I don't think they knew what they were getting into. It's caused, it just hasn't, hasn't been working as well as it should, because you need a coordinated response between fire, police, and ambulance, just as you've mentioned.
Absolutely.
But the discussion paper actually reflects some of those comments and concerns, and I think if Danny was able to attend that meeting, it would probably be, he would probably be a good choice.
There's no question, but our point is, does he take up a spot for us at the meeting?
Well, yeah.
If he's our second person, then we're done. If he's, if he's not our second person, if he's not considered our second person, then we will select someone else to go, because it makes it easier than having Marion sort of give us the feedback, meaning where maybe we'd have another set of ears and so forth there.
Sure, and I think he'd work.
There's also mentioned, I don't know if you picked it up in here, some of the costs related to ambulance work, they're not covered. They're not covered. I looked for it, I was reading it over again late last night, and I didn't have a pen in hand, I shouldn't, because I should have marked it. So that's, that's a downloading of some of the related costs. And the sad part about that is, that leaves it to each respective municipality to go out and try to buy the equipment that's no longer covered, whereas if you're all working together, then you can buy that equipment to restock, whatever those needs are, at a volume price, at a competitive price from the supplier. But you sort of lose that, because they don't pay some of it, so...
Yeah, some they did, in the, you know, some of the things that they mentioned, they would, but basically what it does is it downloads quite, you know, if we saw the...
Responsibility someone.
...all responder with our fire, which they do anyway. You know, they say that we already, as a fire department, if we're needed, they're there, because that's their concern, but what, by volunteer, or by signing on to the program, they worry that, that we kind of lose control. All of a sudden, we're, now we're under AHS to do this, and we're meant, we're required to respond to these calls, which, like I said, we lose a little bit, some of our control of, you know, our staff and things like that.
And so who pays for the volunteers that have to go out, right?
We do.
The other comment, the other thought that was bouncing around in my mind... That is going to be a very interesting meeting, a consultation meeting, because people will go, and they will not, they will, they will fire from the hip, the people that are going to be there will fire from the hip, I am sure. After the meeting, I'll tell you the name of an individual who is, refreshingly, he's kind of head of the South on AHS, refreshingly, a very capable and a very responsive individual, but I'm not really going to mention the name in public here, so, even though it's a good report on this individual. So let me move into the 6C, the South Water Users Co-op Agreement.
I think there was something interesting, the fact that they were willing to reduce the usage in half to the cost of the town, and the rest to be put down to the cost of the county on their license, water license.
The question came up... They'll provide their water outside of our municipality borders on our license, and the answer is likely that it can be grandfathered in, I think, is where the answer for that lies. And Marion?
I just see that perhaps there's some confusion there as to what we're discussing. Yeah, if I might...
Go ahead, Marion.
This is just in your background, or there's no documentation in the agenda, it was just in your background. Murray has been in discussions with the South Water Users Co-op, and they have agreed to reduce the allocation of water on the town's license by approximately half, down to 720 cubic meters annually. I have, Murray drafted a bit of an amendment to the original 1986 agreement, and I have forwarded that information to our legal advisors. They have recommended that rather than an amendment to the 1986 agreement, that we actually do an amendment to our master agreement, our water conveyance agreement that we entered into a couple of years ago, addressing this specific issue. One of the concerns that we still have, though, is, as you're aware, Alberta Environment has changed the rules over the last number of years, and one of the rules is that we are to only distribute water to our own municipal boundaries on our license. And so because this is an old agreement, we're trying to get some clarification from Alberta Environment, if they will grandfather this, and a portion of it still be able to come from the town's license under a new agreement. Murray has had staff in contact with Alberta Environment, and they have assured him that that will be approved, and I've asked Murray to get that for us in writing, so that we have record of that, so it doesn't put us in jeopardy if we do enter into the agreement. If council is comfortable with the reduction to the 720 cubic meters, obviously subject to Alberta Environment approval, we will move forward with the amended agreement to the water, the master water agreement, and we'll bring that forward for council once it's drafted. I anticipate having that from our legal by the end of this week.
You're enjoying the motion on that.
Right now, just some direction, because I will bring the agreement back once it's finalized for council's final approval.
Counselor Court?
Well, then I think we should, as a council, direct administration to pursue the amendment to the master, subject to the Alberta Environment.
Is that the sentiment of council? Yeah, Marion, that's, yes, that's a positive.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind is, even though the 700 cubic meter, 720 cubic meters would come off of our license, it would be charged at the full cost recovery rate. So it's just a matter of disseminating the amount that's coming off our license and the amount that's coming off the county license. And for any future development on that line, it's anticipated that that would all be through the county, other than the two that we've already agreed to in the original 1986 agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. So item number 6D has to do with administration responding to requests for some information, some background in order to discuss policy number R/8-1 on council remuneration. There's some excellent information there. I command Alexis on putting that information together, and it's all over the map, how various municipalities, from the Town of Raymond, MD of Protest, Clarence Home, Town of Fort McCloud, Town of Pincher Creek, Town of Gitchbury, and it's just all over the place. So, I mean, let me ask this question. Does council want to wade into this and put together some suggestions? I guess it's, it's not a wise thing to leave this to a brand-new council in five months, because that's asking some folks to wade in and make some decisions on something that they, for the most part, would be totally unfamiliar with, which is probably not a fair burden placed upon the council court.
Counselor Cronin and I were talking about this before meeting. I think it would be a good idea to maybe have a member of council, a member of the administration, maybe two or three members at large in the community, to have a look at this, to see what might be more fair and equitable as far as remuneration goes. And I agree with you, I don't think we should dump it on a new council, but I wouldn't mind seeing some kind of a order.
What we were saying, we were saying that that is a model that format, and alls, Town of alls.
I certainly would want to disaccount anything for that.
There's quite a few towns in Southern Alberta that have this type of committee looking at those things. I had also another, another idea, that maybe what we need to look at, right now we pay per meeting, et cetera. There is other models that shows you that you could be paid as an annual honorary or inclusive, but that leaves me to wonder what happened then for your mileage when you move here to meeting outside of town. And should there be an hourly rate for meetings, meaning and travel, that are above four hours? For example, there is some meeting, as Counselor Edmonds was mentioning, that sometimes is six hours, and really, that to him is part of this year list depend for committees. So I'm wondering if that could be also another way to approach it, but to have committees inside there, except that in order to kind of level the playing field, we should also deduct if we're not attending a meeting. It would be a fair way to look at it. There has to be some accountability somewhere.
Counselor, you made some good points. Marion, I believe we deduct when a council misses a meeting, a council meeting. For example, if Counselor Edmonds is at the community futures in Pincher Creek, because they had to change the time of their meeting, he gets deducted for his absence here, is that correct?
For council meetings only, not for committee meetings.
Right, right, and that's, and that's my point. So we could, we should probably, in my mind, put some conditions upon attending committee meetings with some, with some deductions for missing those, because it places us in a bad light. It's, it erodes some of our credibility, if you will, if assigned committee meetings are not attended. And so in my mind, there should be some accountability there, maybe coupled with a brief report of some of the highlights. Now, I know we try to do that now. We try to go through, and every committee that we participate in, we're asked to report on events and significant matters that are discussed. we're asked to report on events and significant matters that are discussed. But we really haven't implemented anything which would deduct from the compensation of the remuneration if those committee meetings are missed.
There is another question, too. For example, if you are part of a RIDA, as I am right now, which is an economic, original economic development organisation, it might be the same thing with a SHINOC or whatever. And if you are on a board of directors, then if you are part of a subcommittee, and if you are part of the executive, now you have three levels of meetings that could happen in the same month or every two months, which is what's happening to me. And then I'm really wondering, how do we classify that? Is that part of the committee, which right now I'm looking at it that way, and I only claim mileage? That is a question we might have to kind of discuss and try to figure out. What is fair, one councillor for one organisation has to go three or four times a month? Because they are different level of in that organisation. So it's a little bit different. Right now, only claim mileage and not all, because to me it seems to be almost too much.
There's another concept as well, thank you, Counselor Cullen. There's another concept having to do with how each of us individually envisions our level of volunteerism on council versus my time's valuable. If I have to leave my job, and my employer says, "Fine, we can spare you away from your job, but we can't, you know, pay you when you're absent from your work", this in a sense replaces, to a partial degree, maybe to a full degree, the fact that, let's say, when you were up at the lodge, working for the Schenecthe Foundation at the lodge, and you missed some time. And it's not fair that the taxpayer pay you when you're not there, but by the same token, you have every right, I would think, to claim that compensation, that relative compensation, for your volunteer time to the town. Just as a fireman has the right to, if it's a volunteer fireman, to be compensated when the town signals he's needed or she is needed, right? So these are the concepts that we've got to wait, Counselor Dow.
I don't think anybody sitting around this table ran for election three years ago for the money involved. But I do think that the people around this table should be compensated, I'll use the word reasonably, I can't define that word. So I think we're faced with two things. First, we're here because we wanted to be here, and we volunteered to be here. And secondly, we're taking our personal time to be here. And when you take away personal time, there should be some compensation involved.
There should be some sacrifices, yeah. Counselor Cullen?
That's why I'd like to go back to the original point. We need to strike up a committee of some kind that can look at this. Obviously, council should be deciding what they're getting paid. But I think there should be a member of council, a member of administration, and two or three members of community should look at this and look at all the options, and maybe come up with a formula that we can accept.
One more thought.
And I think it should be done before the next election, so we're not going beyond that.
One more thought, if I left with the comparables, I find Carson at the bottom of the top row.
Not totally.
No, I'm not concerned, but that's a fact.
Well, not totally, because I kind of played with the numbers. And some are not too far off from what we have.
I lean towards a flat amount for compensation, a flat honorary, if you want to use the word, with clause that claws some of that back for missed council meetings and committee meetings. Now, maybe what we need to involve, have is an expectation that if a councillor X cannot be at a committee group, then we sort of do like on our temple shift, we find a sub to take care of that. Because I do think that our absence from the various committees and boards and panels, I think, it erodes our credibility. So those are just some of my thoughts. I'm not sure how hot I am about getting members of the committee in on this, because you might get someone with an extreme position on either side. It's not fair that we get a person from the public that says, "You guys shouldn't be paid at all", or on the other hand, a person from the public says, "Hey, you should be paid $10,000", and, you know, yeah, so there's some risks there. There's some risks there. So if council's prepared to make a motion on how you want to proceed, I do believe we should take care of this before the election. It shouldn't be an election issue. It shouldn't be put in the lap of a new council, because they're fresh and brand-new.
I think if we want to go with the annual honorary, what we need to base it on is first of all, on the average from the past, expenses that we all incurred, or stipends that we were paid from the past three or five years. And then can I move it towards the future, for the next four years, to be reasonably in line with cost of living or whatever might be the reason for increasing it yearly? It has to have some kind of system in place, which we already have, so...
I'd like to see a simplified system, and you know, I like very just a... You're missing a meeting, or this, that, it comes off. I get my thing from Gilbert, but it's not going to be...
Yeah, but this is the annual, is based on an annual honorary. That's what you get, and that represents... And Marion would know, Marion would know from the records, how many council meetings that represent, how many committee meetings that represent on a whole, and then make a fair average as whole.
Having said that, though, there are some councillors that have heavier loads than other councillors, as far as out-of-town meetings, et cetera. So that has to be factored in as well.
Well, this is why I was trying to say, should there be then, when it's in excess of four hours, or maybe it's four hours is too much, maybe it's three hours, should there be an hourly rate at that level and be added on?
I think I made this mention last time. If you're going out of town, in my mind, there's going to be some compensation for that, the size of mileage.
I know, well, that's a different philosophical...
Well, I mean, that's part of your committee, though.
That's right.
It's true, but if you're out of town, it doesn't matter, it's still part of your committee.
Because you still claim your mileage. What you don't claim is your excess time.
Your two hours of travel time.
Right.
Well, a case in point is when you go to Lethbridge to...
Yeah, I mean, I do that.
Or when you go to Aldersford, when you go to Southcote, where Counselor Edmonds, as we speak, is over at Community Futures. So here's going to be my suggestion. I'm going to suggest a committee of council of three members of council, with one administrative individual there as a scribe for guidance, for, you know, and so forth, and come back with a proposal to council. That's my recommendation, but Counselor Cullen?
I'd still like to see at least one member at large, not on council, not on administration, on this committee.
I would recommend pulling another person.
Yeah, I would propose to see someone else carefully selected, I would say, and maybe not even from the community, maybe, I don't know, for somebody of the... Well, I'd say the nature like George Kev, or somebody that, you know, somebody that understands municipalities and understands municipal government.
And sends a bill.
Well, I say maybe not, you know, I'm not saying that person, but just somebody that is knowledgeable, a knowledgeable individual, that, you know, because you mentioned extremes, and yeah, I would want somebody that's extreme, but somebody that has a knowledgeable position and understanding of municipal government that would be on that committee. I almost think that in the collective of the half a dozen or however many examples we have, I think we have the ideal there in front of us. We can pick and choose what we think looks good, and discuss it further in council councilship.
I was just going to say that, I mean, we still have 3,500 people, and I don't think that the responsibility of the council nowadays, you know, our workload is any heavier than it was, you know, in the past. So, I mean, I don't want to see everything getting in the hand here, you know, for a small community. I mean, people are struggling enough with their property taxes and, you know, making ends meet as well, to, you know, to start jacking up the rates and fees for attending meetings, and, you know, some meetings that probably, some of them have no value, you know, to the town or to the taxpayer, they never make it back here.
I think my philosophy would be that we certainly be on the lower end. That to be the philosophy that I think a committee that we would select, that we'd be on the low end, but...
I'm not suggesting jacking up anything, I just think we need a more simplified, understandable system. Well, I mean, you can, you know, take how many ever, how many ever meetings there are, times whatever, and that's what you're... But, I mean, what's the difference between having the regular meeting?
Well, the difference is that you pay monthly one flat rate and et cetera, right?
Well, you still got to years subtracting and adding and all that for your missed or extra committee meetings.
Okay, so we don't want to belabor this, because I think we've reached the point where we should actually determine the model that we want to proceed with.
Let's keep it as simple as we can.
I agree, I agree. Part of the problem is, we're facing summer, and we really don't want to leave this till September, although if a committee can meet once before summer, maybe once the same day as our July council, for example, so we don't tie up an extra day, you know, by September, end of September, we could actually have a couple of options, A, and option B, to present back to council. Counselor Dow, did you have a motion you wanted to make as to what that committee would look like?
I would recommend it could be be two or three members of council, one member at large from the community, and a member from our administration.
And a member from administrations and advisory non-voting?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's your motion?
I have this motion.
Okay.
I'd make your further recommendation. There are, I don't know if this would work or not, there are a number of members of council that have already made it public that they're not running again. I think they're probably the ones that should be on the committee, well, the ones that are running.
Okay, so, three councillors, one public at large.
That makes it difficult, who comes to vote, because you can't break a tie.
You need two councillors and one member of that.
That'd be all right, two councillors and a member at large. I would like for you on that committee.
Okay, so, okay, so you can be on that committee. Who else that's not running again would like to? Because I agree, I agree, it's probably better that someone that's not running again, and Counselor Dow has stated that, I believe, that you're not running again.
No.
Anyone else prepared to sit on that committee that's not running again?
Are you running again?
No.
I plan to do a lot of things in the next three years before the next provincial election. And that says a lot right there.
I think we just got you appointed by the council. That's a sick...
Okay, so Counselor Dow and myself will be on that committee, and...
May I recommend a public member?
Go ahead.
Has had some experience in government?
Yeah.
As Mr. Reedy.
His experience in government is at a different level. I would almost recommend Mel Cottle, quite frankly, because Mel Cottle has been, and he's a three-term councillor, as you know.
He's very busy, I know. It's difficult to set up meetings with him just because he is...
We've got him doing a few other things, too, don't we?
Yeah, we do, right.
He's the chair of the Red Port Department.
If I might, Mr. Reedy?
Yeah.
What about a representative from the business community? We could talk to the chamber and see if they have a recommendation.
Would you recommend some common or somebody?
Yeah.
I'd try to put Jason Common.
Just a suggestion.
Well, that's fine, if he wants to.
Because I should do it quickly. Who you ought to be on there for administration, Marion?
I'll just appoint someone.
Okay, so the motion has been made by council...
Or maybe you might be stuck with me.
Please, I'm just kidding. The motion's been made by Counselor Dow, two members of council, specifically himself and myself, a member of the public. And we may not get our first choice, we may need to, you know...
What about Mr. Nye of CSL?
Oh, Dave Nye?
He's certainly a possibility, I agree. He's accounted for one, and he's in business. So I think Dave Nye would be not a bad choice either. Okay, so we will select, or council can select, I don't really care. I don't need to be the one that selects. But we had a couple of names mentioned, we will try those. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
You got the motion?
Oh, it's a little grassy lawn.
No!
I know.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right. Now, the next issue is the RFP on the tourist information services. Marion, you need a motion on this, or just direction to council, to administration?
I'd like a motion to accept the RFP.
Counselor Creed moves acceptance of the tourist information service proposal. Now let's have some discussion on that. Did anybody find anything that caught your attention? There was some, if I could, there was some, just some casual discussion between myself, and, again, casual discussions between myself and the, or one member of our, on the financial side, about how, you know, rent would play into this RFP. We have a certain amount of budget money aside for operation of the tourist facility, do we not?
Correct. I think the intent of this, though, is to see what the proposals are there and to determine if that's going to fit within our budget. So I don't want to get into too many details at this point, because I think we're looking for suggested input. One comment I'd like to make is just that, in here, you'll see that the square footage is X-ed out, and we will input that square footage once it's been determined. We were just looking for who turns it out.
Marion, I said we didn't send on that yet.
No.
Okay, I'll see you, it's a title, it's a...
Okay, the motion has been made by Counselor Creed in reference to the terms and conditions of the RFP. Any further comments on the motion? I will call a question all in favor. Motion carries, thank you. So moving into seven. Section 1 has been deleted. 782, emergency service dispatch agreements.
You were going to give me a minute to talk about the possibility of the donation policy.
Oh, that will come...
At this point?
Let me have a look here. Let's work through as much of our agenda as possible, and put it under number 10, questions. Okay, all right. Just simply because I want to make sure that we get through as much of the agenda as we can. The emergency services, this is a recommendation from committee the whole. Is anyone prepared to make that motion of approval? Councillor Cronin moves approval of the emergency services dispatch agreement between the town of Lethbridge, city of Lethbridge and the town of Paris. Moved by councillor Cronin, any discussion? Comments, question all in favor, that motion carries. Seven eight three, the proposed increase in some campground fees is in preparation with councillor Dow, so moves. Any discussion on that motion from our campground contractors regarding some increases in fees? Call that question all in favor, motion carries. Now, the next issue is a request for decision that emerges in our agenda. Some, and I guess the one that brought this to our attention is Marion mentioned that High River. High River has an information meeting where anyone who, and this would have to be prior to nomination day, because, you know, you've got two hours on nomination day, you snooze, you lose, and so this would have to be something that happened at the time designated where possibly Marion would invite anybody that could come to a public meeting, maybe they're not going to run, maybe they're just curious, maybe they're there on behalf of somebody else, talking about what to expect should you run for.
That's a good idea.
Uh, some around this table would possibly be involved to field questions, to give some information, and so I guess Marion wants some direction, whether or not we as a council feel that there's wisdom in doing that.
I believe so.
Okay, we're not a bunch of bobbleheads, but just give me your bobblehead if you think that that's... I'm seeing a fair bit of support for that, Marion, so we don't need any motion on that, do we? You want a motion?
No, I think we're okay. I intend to set up a session and we'll set it as kind of an open house, and it'll be early September, so we'll spend some time making sure that that information gets out, and I'm sorry, councillor. July and August, obviously, are difficult times to get people, so we'll try and be as early in the month as we can to give people an opportunity, but I think you as council have the experience that perhaps you could provide some mentorship to individuals who are interested in running for council and get a bit of a feel of what is, what the expectation is and what you've gone through as councillors.
I think we would be better off to do it prior to the council meeting on the tenth.
That would be all right.
That's my opinion.
I'm going after the committee to the whole, I think after the committee.
The problem with after is virtually every LDS ward in the area will be having their September back-to-school barbecue, depending on the night they meet, the third or the fourth or the tenth and the eleventh, and that's why I would lean towards before the meeting. But that's just me, I, I'm just one voice around this.
Thanks for an hour meeting then.
Not the most, yeah.
I'll talk on the tenth.
Okay, I'm going to tell you, I won't be there on the...
Okay.
September tenth.
Okay, Marion, you have a comment?
Yeah, one concern, sorry, one concern of going before five o'clock is it limits the number of people who potentially would attend. I think that this is something that could be done between seven and eight o'clock at night would be probably the ideal time. That way you allow for anyone that may be interested to attend.
Would that be a problem to do it then, the committee of the whole night, between seven and eight?
There's some wisdom in that, the committee the whole night, it starts at four, we're usually done by about six-thirty. We might even be done by six, because councillor Smith does not like late meetings.
Right. And he's in a chair, so it shall be particularly good.
So, basically, let's decide, council, do you want it on the third or do you want it on the tenth, and you want this to be immediately following council meeting?
Personally, my choice is the third.
Same, mine would be the tenth. I would suggest that, I won't be here on the third, you won't be here on the tenth, so...
Either is fine, so three quarters?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we all have to be there for the meeting, I don't think, I think, you know, two or three or four councillors are here to kind of, I mean, to kind of just, like you say, I mean, it's not the decisions we made, it's just kind of, you know, give them some information on what they need, so, I mean, I don't think we all have to be there.
Well, and I think that's an excellent point, councillor, for a couple of reasons. I know we all make our best effort to be accessible, available, et cetera, and so anyone that's interested can just contact any of us at any time that we're available and sit down and have that discussion as well. So, councillor Smith, I agree with you, whatever night council chooses, there will be some that can't be there and some that can be there.
So, should we have two open houses for that purpose?
I don't think so. I think they can approach any one of us at any time and talk to us, I mean, if they're, if they're interested in it, they'll make the effort to come and see one of us, but, I mean, let's just have one night, and if they have a church activity, you know, what's more important, running for councillor or one of their churches?
They'll have to make that decision.
Going for a barbecue.
The reason I would like to be there is very simple. I'm the only female member of this council, and if there are female members, I think it's an interesting rapport.
Dynamic.
That's all.
Okay, who's available the third? Show me your hands, please.
On which day?
The third. Who's available the third?
I'll be watching you guys play swords.
Who's available, Larry will be there too. Who's available the tenth? Oh, looks like it's the third? Okay, the third at six o'clock. Does that sound good? The third at six o'clock.
Six or seven?
Six. Because we can meet through CCW by six and have that meeting and people can still get to their work thing to do a little bit later.
You want to open it from six to seven, or one o'clock?
I think it, my opinion is that it would need to be limited, right?
Six to seven or six to...
Six to seven?
I would recommend, Mayor, that we put an ad in the local newspaper, maybe twice, two weeks before and a week before.
We'll, we'll try and get the information out. We will be spending a lot of time in the summer focusing on getting information out about the election and what's happening, so this will just be part of that.
Okay. Thank you, council. We have next up the letter from the town of McGrath. Please, if you would, councillor, it's...
It's associated with the Chinook Foundation, the Diamond Whittle Lodge down in the terrace lodge in McGrath. As you know, most of our lodges were built near the sixties. Ours has actually been, is in pretty, pretty good shape as far as room size goes. We don't have much trouble filling our lodge here. Twenty of our beds are enhanced, which means they have PCs coming to help them, et cetera. McGrath, on the other hand, their roots are quite small, and they do have a hard time filling their, their lodges, because in the old days, people came when they got a certain age, you went to the lodge house, if the people, well, the, the new sixty is seventy now, if you're seventy, it's like you're sixty, twenty years ago, so everybody's staying in their own homes longer, so they're trying to figure out a way they can make this more attractive to people, and this is what this letter is dealing with, they're negotiating with the government, I can't remember the whole detail on it, that they want to add on to the Diamond Whittle Terrace, but they bought the land, the Chinook Foundation's bought the land, and now they're looking for letter of support, and we haven't discussed this in the council, so...
They want to, they want to, I guess, I'll use my word, improve the rooms in Diamond Whittle. Rooms are small, they're not handy, problems are, are old.
There's a lot of things that probably, if they, if they went to colder down these, it wouldn't work.
You wouldn't do it today.
So, what they want to do is combine the two rooms of the existing lodge, what they want to do is build a new wing, basically, and then when that's built, they move everything from the existing lodge over, then renovate the existing lodge, and I'm not quite sure why they're looking for letter of support, I know that they were in negotiation, some kind of a pilot project with the government, and we haven't really discussed this initiative foundation yet, so...
Maybe Monday.
Yeah. So, should we sign on it? I would probably wait.
Well, is, is the extension to be funded partially by the government?
We're sure.
Is that the reason why that letter of support is needed, is to request funding?
Well, I would suggest a letter of support would be fine, but I'm not so sure this would be the letter of support, but they, are they going to come up with a different funding formula for sort of... They're working on it, they're constantly...
Because, I mean, I hate to see another wing go on there and then an additional requisition amount come to the...
No, that's, yeah, that's not the intent, and there is, we are, we're hoping that there's, they're working with this anyhow, with the provincial government, some kind of a funding formula, nothing solid, nothing...
Nothing's safe.
Nothing better, you better think of the funding formula figured out first and then start to... This is kind of separate from that, councillor, that they, they're working with some, because I understand it's some kind of a pilot project that they've been in negotiation or discussion with, with, not a minister per se, but with this senior civil servant in this department to see what they can work out. So, will the full cost come onto the Chinook Foundation with your requisition? No, no.
No, I mean, nothing cost of the building, but, I mean, once the residents are in there, you know, I mean, then, I mean, isn't that what happens right now? Are we requisitioned?
That's correct.
I've got a couple of questions.
So, we're thinking if there's more residents that would be put in there, will the requisition amount increase?
Should it increase?
What is the proposed size in terms of occupants? Is the new property with the building geared for it?
We don't know.
So, Marion, I'm thinking we're just a little bit premature on this. I, I think, councillor Cronin, what are your thoughts?
Well, I have a question for Marion. Marion, you had a conversation with the town of McGrath, I would imagine, regarding this?
This actually came to us through Kim Schnorr, a conversation with Mayor Skell, and asking if we could support this letter, is my understanding, the mayor informed Kim that that would need to come to council. I had a phone call with Kim, but in the meantime, I received this letter from Wade. My understanding was that it had already been discussed at the Chinook Foundation board level. If it hasn't, then I would agree with councillor Court that that's the appropriate venue by how that recommendation should come back to council.
I mean, we had discussions on this, but I don't remember any talk of a letter to Court, but I might be wrong.
I would suggest that we table this and discuss it Tuesday, after we've had the Chinook Foundation meeting on Monday.
Well, and I agree, councillor, because what they're asking us to sign off on is still very hazy, very nebulous, if you want my personal opinion.
I don't understand exactly what we're signing.
So, I'm totally in agreement with councillor Dow, councillor Court.
Yeah, I don't think we're pressed for time here.
Because you're meeting on Monday, you'll be able to report back and tell them that we need just a little bit more principle if we're going to try to give our support in principle. What is, what is, there's got to be just a little bit of meat on those bones.
I think councillor Smith might be right, we need to know if there's extra cost involved to the foundation, we're not sure, and again, I wasn't steeply at the meetings, I don't remember this being discussed.
Well, I kind of think someone's maybe got the cart a little bit ahead of the horse here. Okay, so, so basically, the sentiment is, we're going to wait at least until after your meeting on Monday.
Yeah, we should have more information.
All right, so, now that said that...
Do we need a motion to table that?
It was just a letter.
I would like to have a motion to table so that we can give them the next agenda.
And I appreciate that that motion comes from a member of our Chinook delegation. Councillor Dow moves to table, all in favor. We should, do we, do we need to put a time on that motion to table?
We'll put it on the next council agenda.
It's all about the meeting by time. The next agenda on next Tuesday, a week from Tuesday.
Two weeks?
Two weeks from Tuesday.
Yeah. Okay, so that motion is carried, okay. Okay, so, somebody had a marshmallow roast, absent marshmallows, at the recycling trailer, so Marion will speak to that, and we found out that our live building only covers twenty-five-hundred dollars, and we need about, well, not quite twenty-five thousand, but several thousand to replace the trailer. We can rent one in the meantime, but it certainly doesn't, twenty-five hundred dollars, let's build us a new recycling trailer.
I'm just passing around some pictures there. The first two sets are photos of the existing recycling trailer that was damaged on the weekend. We had a report on Monday morning that there had been a fire in that, and so our public works department has taken that trailer and the steps around it away, they're cleaning up the site, and they'll grade and re-gravel down there while the trailer's away. We reported that to insurance, and as the mayor said, we were informed today that we have twenty-five-hundred dollars coverage on that facility. We have talked with Hallwall, that small picture that the mayor is holding up right now, they do have that available immediately for us to rent, so that we don't have a downtime, we believe we can get that within a couple of days. We're trying to get clarification from the insurance now whether they'll cover that rental fee. So, what you have in front of you there is a couple of examples the mayor is holding of, the one on the, the mayor's right, okay, is an eight unit, and the one in his left hand is a twelve unit. We are recommending that we replace with the eight unit. The cost of that is sixteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars, so obviously our insurance isn't covering the cost. I, just as an aside to that, I've asked Nolan to review all of our insurance and ensure that our assets are insured for replacement value rather than initial value or depreciated value, so hopefully that will be corrected in the future. So, what we need to do tonight, I guess, is I would like a motion from council to support the purchase of an eight unit, it would take four to six weeks to get here. If you remember at the budget presentation, we did have some leeway in our capitalization policy, and that was set aside specifically for these types of incidents where we would have an unexpected capital purchase that we could find.
We have that motion from councillor Cronin, okay? I think you can term it this as ours, or if it was...
The police have not got back to us. I guess there's really only two options, combustible or...
Or intentional combustible.
Or intentional combustible.
One way or the other, we need to...
The thing is, the trailer is designed to hold recyclable products, so there shouldn't be any reason for paint cans, you know, any kind of aerosol cans or hot items to be put in there, so even if that's what it was from, I would suggest that it, it may not have been on purpose, but...
The reason I ask this is let's just talk from doing it again and again.
Well, you know, if you look at the new design on those, as you pass them around, they're, they're much more protected than we have currently with the sort of stock trailer style that we had before, so it, it may help for that reason. The other thing it'll help with is from having garbage dumped into those, because the openings are only designed to handle flattened cardboard or, you know, a small container, rather than being able to push whatever you can shove through a big hole in them. One of the other things we've talked about is posting the facility with a surveillance and finding a way that we could put it in a location that we can have some surveillance on that. This isn't the first time that we've had a recycling trailer burned in my experience with the town. Doesn't happen frequently, but it has happened.
Stuck in a very hidden place back there.
Yeah, but you can't, you don't want your recycling out in obvious places either.
Marion, could you comment, I don't know if it's there in place, capacity of the trailer that's been burned versus the capacity of the eight unit?
It would be very similar to the eight unit.
Oh, really? Great.
I don't think it would be same, just because it can be emptied in a heartbeat.
Well, but we can't have everybody empty it, you know, we sort of have to have it emptied when we can have it emptied. So Counselor Conan has moved the purchase of the eight unit. I will call that question. All in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you, Marion. I'm just upset I didn't get invited to the winner. Okay, town council motion list is there for your scrutiny, as is the bylaw, animal control report. Marion, do you want to address nine C?
What is nine C?
This is just a report to council. I was just made aware today. Ernie Borak, who is the engineer for the disaster funding program, will be at the golf course on June 19th. I've been informed, Dean Somerfelt, so we will be meeting with him that date, and hopefully, we can get that matter on the control.
And Counselor Conan wanted to speak to us a little bit about some thoughts on our donation policy. Let's, let's limit this to just a couple of minutes, but go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, the reason I thought we had difficulty making a decision last time in reviewing the policy for donation, I really felt that what is missing in that policy is the question that I'm going to pose. What does council consider to be appropriate, to be a fair amount of donation when it comes to waiving fees? This is not a cash outlay. It only represents a non-budgeted potential source of revenue. Should we maybe set a maximum dollar amount for such donations towards the use of town facilities such as $500 or $600? That is what's missing in our policy. That's why we're struggling. And so I am recommending that maybe we set a limit to what should be a fair amount of donation for town facilities.
Thank you, Counselor. So let's, let's revisit for just a second if we could. Some recent history. We waived the fees for the Alzheimer's Walk coming up.
It was about $250.
And we've, we've waived a few other fees. I'm trying to remember some, and I'm trying to remember the amounts, but nothing's coming to me. The other thing is we, we have to be careful. We don't confuse it with some donations that we've made. For example, the Legacy Half Marathon is not happening this year. So as it turned out, unfortunately, for whatever reasons, it is not able to be a standalone event. I kind of wish it was, but did we do the descending on that, Marion? Did we do?
Yeah, that fell under the opportunities initiative.
Right.
Which is different than the donation.
So let's not confuse the two. As the water to glacier thing...
Correct.
We also put that under the opportunities initiative. So did, Marion, can you give us from your recollection, some similar anecdotes, some samples of what kind of amount so that we can maybe put some relevance to Counselor Conan's thought of putting a cap on donations or fee waivers for facilities?
Off the top of my head there, I'm not able to speak to specifics in dollars. I think the point would be looking at what is council comfortable with. You know, the average rental cost is X amount of dollars per hour, and are you comfortable with a maximum of one day's fees or two days' fees total? Or I, I think it's more of a philosophical than, than an actual $200 or $300 amount.
I'm almost thinking maybe we'll search. What was, comes to my mind, I mean, we made an actual cash donation there for the hospital, for their maternity facility, which was, you know, quite a bit, you know, above our donation. I'm thinking facilities, probably the same. I, I'm not really comfortable with setting a cap. I think you have to evaluate the other, the other...
The merits?
Merits of the proposal and, and decide because, you know, once you set a cap, you're going to violate it because you're going to find something that's, you want, that you want to have. I think, I think there's, there's other merits that are probably more important than particular amounts because it, it would be artificial, no matter what you set, it's going to be some kind of an artificial amount, so.
Okay, so what you're trying to say is...
But Counselor, Counselor Smith, sorry?
I'm all in favor of, I think, not-for-profit groups, I don't have a problem giving them a break of some, of some time. And I, and I think maybe the one way to do it is maybe a percentage off, 50% off, or whatever it is. But I mean, for profit organization, I don't have any problem charging them the full fee, not-for-profit. I think that, you know, I mean, there, there are costs associated with, but I do, and I know that they do, you know, need a little bit of a break and some help or whatever, right? So, I mean, and each event is different. Each event requires maybe a facility for different amounts of time, so if we get one group $250 for a one-day event, and people that want to have an eight-day event, you give them $1,000, I mean, maybe we should just base it on a percentage off of what our, our fixed rate is, whatever, for nonprofit.
And there was another nonprofit that left a big mess, so that can be a factor as well. You know, what might be the, but they paid. They, they were nonprofit, but they paid. Okay, so good points. Counselor Conan, you have a comment?
Well, talking, listening to Counselor Creed, what you determined then to be a good reason for giving is the cause. I was trying to stay away from the cause and just decide what is something that we're comfortable with in terms of donation. As Marion said, one day today, what is it? What's our limit?
Okay, so, so I, I have to say, I kind of, I really do side with Counselor Creed because it's going to be arbitrary, and then by the, when we're voted council, we can do away with it and, and change that. So let me just ask this question. Counselor Conan has raised a valid concern. Should we put some parameters in terms of dollar value on our donation or facility fee waiver policy? If council isn't interested in putting some parameters, then we leave it as it is.
But last time didn't bring us nowhere in terms of recommendation, no solution. So are we going to be facing the same problem?
But, but hang on a minute. CCW did recommend approval. We did ask that Mrs. Burwell come and give us a little bit more information, and they've decided for their own reasons to put it off for a couple of months. I'm guessing because maybe they can't find the handbell people to be around all summer. Maybe they didn't think that lots of people would be around to come to a concert in the summer. I don't know the reason, so they're thinking about later in the year. Does council have an appetite to put some parameters or some guidelines or some limits on the donation or the waiver policy? Counselor Conan, or Counselor Smith, sorry?
Well, yeah, I think that's probably a good idea. Not where I'd never, you know, I mean, they can just go to administration instead of having to come to council under approval of fee waivers for, I mean, if administration has that information at their hands, I mean, that's just...
But we do have a clause in there that gives administration the flexibility, up to what is it, $200?
Currently, it's $100, and perhaps that could be increased, which would give us some additional flexibility.
Counselor Conan?
I would be of the same type of mind that maybe then for non-cash item donation, we should maybe give administration the chance to exercise wisdom and decide on it. Because honestly, I don't think we need to waste time on that. If the cause is a fair cause, then I would say let's give administration a chance to go, $600, $700, whatever that is.
Now, you're talking cash or fee, or facility waiver?
Facility waiver, the equivalent of.
And right now, we, does council want to leave the maximum on a cash donation at $100? Do you want to leave that, or do you want to raise it?
I'd recommend we raise it.
Counselor Dow wants to recommend that flexibility, prerogative to administration to donate up to $200.
I agree.
So is that a motion, Counselor?
Yes.
Discussion on the motion.
That's for a cash donation.
Yes, for a cash donation. You don't have to come to council if it's $200 or less, okay?
Administration to make the dishes.
All in favor?
I think that's fair.
Again, opposed. Okay, so that motion carries. Okay, so now we want to talk about facility rental slash fee waivers. Anything further with it? We want to poke at on that one? Counselor Creed?
Well, I'm talking about arbitrary, it's right, but I would, I would recommend that for a, for a facility waiver, we give administration up to $500 leeway to make a decision.
Counselor, any other thoughts? Counselor Creed just moved that, by the way.
Yeah, that was my motion, sorry.
Yeah, his motion. On facility rental and fee waiver, Counselor Creed moves that we give administration the flexibility to not have to come to council up to $500.
I would like to, I'd almost like to see it on a percentage basis based on whether, what type of group is renting the facility, whether it's certain nonprofit or for-profit.
Well, that's, that's to be for nonprofits.
That's to be nonprofits.
Nonprofit.
Yeah, it would have, it would have to fit the policy. It would have to fit the donation policy anyway, right?
It has to be a nonprofit, otherwise, no.
Yeah, not, not for any donation. It has to fit the donation policy that's in place.
The problem you've got, you've got people asking for our facilities at no cost, then they want to charge the people that come to the event.
Yeah, but if you raise money for a cause, how else can you do it?
I'm not comfortable, just myself, I'm not comfortable with the fee waiver of facilities or donations where anyone will be charged to get in. I'm comfortable with those decisions staying with council because there's all kinds of not-for-profit groups, some registered, some not registered, and that's just me. I'm not comfortable with the $500 ceiling. I would think it should be a little bit lower, but I'm specifically personally not comfortable with if they are going to charge to anyone to participate, such as taking handbell lessons or whatever it might be, gymnastics lessons, whatever it might be, and then turn around and charge an admission to get in, I'm not comfortable with those. Now, in the case of the one that was on the agenda but voluntarily withdrew, I still prefer that we have the last say on those. Counselor Court?
Well, I think also we're, I mean, some of our responsibility is on administration. They have to make a decision by up to $500, and they may say no, and then there's problems, or they may say yes, and make the problems. So I think we're, I think that's our responsibility, make those decisions personally.
Quite frankly, I'm comfortable to leave the $200 ceiling as a ceiling for fee waivers as well. But, Counselor Creed?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if that's in our policy right now, but I, I would agree with you on charging for an event if it's not in the policy. I would accept that as a friendly amendment to add that to the policy that if it's, if it, if there's a charge for the event, that it's still coming back to us to make the decision. But if it's a non, a non, you know, there's no charge for the event that fits the policy in all other ways, I would still be comfortable in a facility waiver, up to $500, I think.
So can we go back and, because we voted on your, on the proposal for $200, can we? Can we go back and change that as the same ceiling for facility waiver on condition, that would be the condition for both? If there's an event that there's admission charge, then it's still got to come to council.
That, that might, I just, maybe I could ask the administration, what typically are charges for, or donations for fee waivers? Like, say, $200, what would that cover? How many, how much time on the civic center, how many, you know, what would that?
Yeah, it would only cover a four-hour block, probably, on average.
I'm thinking, you know, if they could cover like a day.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying is why don't we go percentage-based? Because some people may need the building like this group for five or six days. $200 is not going to, doesn't cover anything for them.
Well, I guess, well, that's why, yeah, I want to keep it simple. I'm just thinking, what's a reasonable, what's a reasonable amount of time that a group would normally maybe want to use, say this, this, or that, for, you know, so, so that we, we don't, you know, have to come for everything.
I don't think there's a normal, I think each group is different. And so I don't think we can say it could be one day or two hours, whatever. I think we better come with something that is more reasonable, to fit the circumstances.
Well, and Counselor Dow, I agree with you wholeheartedly. That's why I couple with the $200 ceiling, but the $200 ceiling can apply if the group is going to charge admission. I, that to me is a simple policy, and it's, yeah, it's a, it's a simple policy. I, I understand where Counselor Smith is going with the percentage kind of thing, but I think the simple, simpler we are, the better.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if they want it for six days, about 50%, and they get up to the cost of three days, I mean, that's as simple as that. If they want the decision for six days, we give it to them for three days, we just 50% of the cost. They want it for one day, you charge them 50% of what a full day is.
Still a little bit complicated, Counselor Creed.
Well, I, I'd be prepared, I'd be prepared to amend my motion, you know, back to $200 if that's, you know, a reasonable amount, if that's... But if, you know, if we have people typically asking for facilities that are going to be over that amount and in every way fits the donation policy and they're not charging fees, then, then I, then I would, you know, go back to my motion and leave it where, you know, so that it's, it's simple and so that it's understandable. And that's, I guess, the question, and maybe administration can help, help us with that.
So what we'd have to do if we go that route, we'd have to have a motion to waive the prior motion, right? To rescind the prior motion, right?
Well, no, I would, I would just amend my motion to a, no, we didn't. I just, I just amend my motion to a lower figure if, if, if it would be, if that would be appropriate, so I'll just...
Marion?
Sure, just to clarify, Counselor Creed's question here, the civic center, we just pulled up the fee schedule here. Nonprofit four-hour block is $60, and a nonprofit per day is $120. So the $200 limit would give them at least one day for the civic center, a multipurpose room. If we go up to, up to the gym and stage, so, or it's the same for the gym and stage.
So I feel, I feel comfortable if, if I could amend that motion, then back to $200, then it's the same, to give the administration leeway to...
Rent that.
Rent that, or to waive those, those fees or make those donations.
No charge to the users or to the people who come to the event.
Right. Is that in the policy right now? If there's, if there's a no charge, is that part of the policy?
I don't believe so, but we're going to amend the policy, and I sort of got the note to check.
To check if, what's the charge, the charge is...
Just if I can, possibly, clear. Yeah, so take an example where they're, they're having a concert and charging admission, that's the means to the end of raising funds?
Except, right.
It is, but we're, we're just saying that would come to council, that to make that decision, to make that decision. We're not saying that, that we wouldn't do it. We're just saying that administration can make the, if there's no charge, administration doesn't have to bring it to council. That's, that's our, that's our intent.
So if it's strictly by donation, then it doesn't have to come to council? So if it's strictly by donation, then it doesn't have to come to council?
Right, if it's a donation policy.
So you consider pledge, those types of things as donation?
Yeah, or waiver.
Just for example, with the Alzheimer's Walk and every participant pays to participate.
It can still come to us. Can still come to us.
So you want those types of things to come to council? I just need some clarification. Are you talking strictly admittance to the event? So if there's a door fee, an admission fee of the door, you want that to come to council?
Yes, but I also, I also want that there not be a fee to participants. If there is, that can come to council as well. That's my feeling.
At the Alzheimer's shop?
That can come to council. It, just that's simple. It can come to council.
Because theirs was not a closed facility, was the mine's park, right?
Yep, and then it can come to council.
Which it did.
Yeah, which it did, which it did.
So with Harry Nixon, I can meet the council?
No, that's why we said two-hundred dollars, councillor. That's why we said two-hundred dollars.
So if there's any event that somebody, you know, wants a facility, they don't charge for the event, up to two-hundred dollars, then administration can make that decision, is that...
Actually, just, once I heard that already, I mean, we already have reduced fees now and I'm thinking about it for nonprofit groups already. So, I mean, why are we, I mean, we've already reduced them by half. So, I mean, I'm going to think about it. Why are we...
He's just putting a limit on it, two-hundred dollars for administration.
For administration.
Yeah, we have to make that decision.
Yeah, but still, I mean, I mean, they're coming to us for requests for a thousand dollars for this one or whatever. I mean, there's already, there's already a fifty percent reduced rate for nonprofit groups. So, I mean, I don't know why you're not just sticking to that policy. I mean, if that's what it is, that's what it is.
But... We're just trying to loosen a little bit the restraints that administration faces and if we put a two-hundred-dollar ceiling, anything up to two-hundred dollars?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine with the ceiling or whatever. Yeah, exactly. But, I mean, for, you know, for groups, yeah, coming, you know, and asking for, you know, a thousand dollars, I mean, the fees are already there. We don't need to change any of that. I mean, that's, nonprofit groups should be paying what it is. But yes, I agree, we can increase the ceiling for administration to make those decisions here.
Okay, so we've got a motion and the motion says, what, who's got it?
This is what we were going to check for, I didn't think it was wrong. So moved by councillor Creed to give administration purview over requests for donations for facility rental...
Or waiver.
Or fee waiver, or fee waivers for nonprofit organizations subject to the donation policy as long as the events do not charge admittance fee or participation fees.
Up to two-hundred dollars.
Two-hundred dollars.
Yeah, with two-hundred dollars.
That sounds right.
Okay, last comment.
No, my comment was exactly what Graham said regarding the caveat. So I'm fine with that.
And we understand that if it's a not-for-profit, they get a different rate anyway. But we're just saying they don't have to come to council if it's two-hundred dollars or less.
I'm sorry to have brought all that up, but I think if we clarify our minds, it'll be easier for us to make decisions.
And, yeah, okay, all in favor? Carers, thank you. That wasn't as painful as we thought. Okay, so now...
Eleven A.
We've got eleven A, Cartson County. And that is that the original public notice had the wrong date. It had the thirteenth or something, the twelfth on it. They now have got it happening this, a week from tomorrow. So that's just a piece of information. They usually give us those. And then a confirmation of our grant from Urban Transportation. And it's typical of these grants, it's a project that was already done. So that's just information that we approved the grant on the project that we've already done. Councillor Dowell, did I see you moving to adjourn?
I just put my papers in my book.
Councillor Dowell moved to adjourn, so we're adjourned.
You and I had to have words before we go.